Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 15 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place due to the outbreak of the coronavirus, this meeting of the town of Berlin Board of Selectmen will be conducted by a remote participation. No in-person attendance of meetings of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. The town of Berlin will use best efforts to post an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's webpage, the town's YouTube channel. Approved minutes will be posted to mytowngovernment.org. For this meeting, the members of the public who wish to attend the virtual meeting may attend via the Zoom webinar platform in one of two ways, with both audio and video access or by telephone audio only. Should any board member have technical difficulties and/or lose access to the meeting, the meeting will recess for a period of time to see whether access can be restored. If not, the meeting will be continued to another date agreed to by a majority of the board or adjourned until our next scheduled meeting. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will invite each board member to provide a comment, question, or motions. Board members and speakers on the agenda, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you. State your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in conversation with each other, please do so through me, taking care to identify yourself. I will do my best to call on attendees when appropriate. I will ask each member of the public who wishes to speak to identify themselves, and will afford each speaker time to ask a question or make a brief comment. For those who have appointments with the board under a specific agenda item, you'll be promoted from attendee to panelist only for that particular agenda item, then move back to attendee if you wish to stay for the rest of the meeting. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:04. And as I said, the meetings of the Board of Selectmen are generally recorded for transmission on both Berlin Cable Television Access Channel and YouTube. Your voice, image, and or telephone number may be recorded. We have approval of the June 4, June 8, and June 11 meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve?
It's moved.
And seconded.
And any comments or questions on any of those? Okay, then we'll take a vote. Keef, aye.
My sake, aye.
Stone, aye.
Okay, unanimous. Margaret, do we have any correspondence?
No, you don't have any special correspondence tonight. I'll touch on a few letters in my report later.
Then we'll move on to general public comment. And just a reminder, if you're on a phone call on a landline, dial star nine on the phone's dial pad to raise your hand and dial star nine again to lower it. The first appointment that we have is with Police Chief Tom Galvin.
Hello, I'm here.
There you are. So if you got, what have you got to tell us about?
So I think you all have the letter I sent. So a while ago, Margaret had mentioned to Chief Clark and I that she was going to reach out to the board about her contractual pay raise this year in light of the fact that all of the non-union people in town were not going to be getting a raise as we looked at our fiscal situation. And with that, and looking at people that work for me, other people in town that work very hard, it didn't seem right that I would still get the contractual raise that I was, you know, that was included in my contract this year. So what it is, is an agreement that I would waive that this year. My hope would be that as this happens, that we can start discussion on a successor contract as July 1 starts the final year of this agreement with the town.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We do so appreciate it from you, Margaret and Chief Clark.
Thank you.
And Chief, and now Chief Galvin, and I appreciate both the chiefs stepping up to do this in solidarity with our, with our other employees. Now, this is, this is one item, so that, that item will have to be acted on. So I'm going to be, I will ask the board to vote on the memorandum of agreement that you have before you tonight. And also, as the chief said, he has requested to begin negotiations. And the one, the way I have approached negotiations in the past is that I've always asked for a board representative to sit on, you know, the small, the two-person negotiations team with me. So I would be looking for a board designate me on that.
I, I, I would volunteer. If you both are in agreement, that's okay.
Well, I'm not going to be here, so you may want to wait and see what's, whoever is, whoever is elected next wants to do. This may be one you want to pause on to see if maybe that's a way that they can jump in and learn also.
Yeah, Chris, I have no issue. I mean, as much as I would love to, unfortunately, you know, I can get away here and there from my job, but probably not get away as much as I would need to. So I don't, I don't have an issue with you taking over.
Margaret, I would like to volunteer.
Okay, I will ask, I will ask the chief one request and Chris, both of you. Is it possible that we begin this after-town meeting so we can at least get through this, this real crunch time here?
Yeah, I think we definitely have enough to do to get through town meeting to worry about that, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And do I hear a motion from the board to approve the memorandum of agreement?
It's moved.
And seconded.
And third. Okay, then if there's no questions, then we will take a vote. Keef, aye.
My sake, aye.
Stone, aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. And just real quick, if it's okay, I know later on in the agenda, you have a vote on a statement regarding racism from the board. And I just, if it's okay, we wanted to touch on a couple of things that happened in town this weekend, and then an email that I sent out to the department today. This weekend, it was a really good weekend in town. I was fortunate enough to meet with a group from Camelada and Mosaic on Sawyer Hill Road in the morning on Saturday, and we'd about an hour to an hour and a half together, and I was able to answer some questions that they had and have, I think what I'd like to make is an opening discussion about what's going on in our country today with them, and something that's hopefully going to lead to some more discussions with them, more discussions with others in town, and more likely than not, broach off into some other subjects, because one of the things they said is that, you know, we're looking at bias and racism today. But bias runs the gamut, and there's a lot of other things and a lot of other discussions as we move forward that we're probably going to have. So that was great to start the morning. Then there was a rally in town, and Lisa talked about that at Coffee Talk, and there were about 60 or so people there, and it really was a great hour and a half. You know, I got to interact with just about everyone. I think almost everyone that was at the meeting in the morning on Sawyer Hill was there, so I got to follow up with some of those people, you know, and really to see the people that were driving through town were very respectful. I think from what I saw, there was one carload of young people that was a little bit on the disrespectful side when they drove by, but other than that, it really, it went well, and it served to send a message and to say what our community was behind. And technically, I sent an email out to the officers today. One of the things I did do when I was at with the group on Sawyer Hills, I read a quote that I had found, and I sent an email to the officers today about perspective. And I look back and think back to when the Black Lives Matter movement started, and that message was starting, you know, started to come across our country, and that was after Trayvon Martin was killed and the, and the verdict in that case. And, you know, I looked at myself, and I looked at, you know, my feelings, and it was hard for me because to me, everyone's important, everyone matters. And that, that message that it put out about all lives matter, and that's an important message, but I think when you look at that message and other messages that are getting pushed as a response to the Black Lives Matter, it's important to take things into perspective. And there's a quote by author Doug Williford that I had read and that I, you know, I'd like to read to you now that I included with the offices, because I think it's helpful in maybe some people in the audience and how we should look at things and people that are having trouble, you know, dealing with that we're looking maybe towards one particular group and what's been happening to their lives. But it just, it, it reads, did I hit my video, sorry? If my spouse comes to me in obvious pain and asks, "Do you love me?", and the answer of "I love everyone" would be truthful, but also hurtful and cruel in the moment. If a coworker comes to me upset and says, "My father just died," a response of "Everyone's parents die" would be truthful, but hurtful and cruel in the moment. So when a friend speaks up in a time of obvious pain and hurt and says, "Black Lives Matter", a response of "All lives matter" is truthful, but it's hurtful and cruel in the moment. So I just think it really kind of puts things into perspective of where we are right now, and for people that, that have that thought and think that everyone matters, you know, the people that started this movement, they truly believe that everyone matters, but there's an issue that needs to be addressed, and that's why that message of "Black Lives Matter" is in the forefront. So if that helps anyone gain some perspective, I think that's important.
So Tom, are you putting something out on the Berlin Police page?
I will talk to Kevin about doing that, but I wanted to share that with the officers first before I pushed it beyond, and I want to see what their feedback is to me.
Very nice.
And the other piece of that is, I would just add that I think we have it a little backwards. All lives can't matter if black lives don't, is really what that's about. You know, those who are people of color feel that they do not matter right now, so you can't really say all lives matter if, if black lives don't.
If someone's being left out.
Yeah. And also, on a happier note, we have a confirmed count of 105.
Did we read it as well?
And it was probably more with people in and out.
Okay, that's good to hear.
Yeah, I was excited.
Very nice, glad it went well.
Hey, Tom, before you go, I don't know if you're going to pull, is the train stuff, while I have you, is the train stuff all done in town? All the railroads, are they done?
So the construction is done. Actually, one of the questions you had had when we talked about it was cleanup.
Yeah.
So that was one of the things I talked to them about, and they said, within a few weeks to a month of the project being completed, we'd see a work car coming through, for lack of a better term, that has like a backhoe attached, and that they come through and pick up all of the debris that's left behind. And that's something that should be able to happen because it doesn't interrupt the line, they just do it in between trains.
Okay, so when's the timeframe on that?
The person that I spoke to from CSX said it usually happens within two weeks to a month after the completion. So we're about two weeks from when they completed in Northboro, so hopefully we'll see it within the next couple of weeks.
All right, I'll keep on you. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
You have anything else to add, Tom?
Not tonight.
Okay. Okay, Lisa?
No, I asked, I'm good.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, all right.
Thanks, Chief.
Have a good night.
You too.
All right, we're a little early, but we have a, an appointment or a presentation from Kumar Chala, I hope I'm not destroying the name, representing Lawball Servall, who's potentially going to purchase Zero Central Street. Would you like to move?
Do you want to do that now?
Yeah, I guess so.
Okay.
If he's, if he's ready and not waiting for anyone.
Chris, excuse me, through the chair, with a, with a few minutes before that appointment time, would you like to squeeze in maybe the blended first-year TA performance narrative or something else that might be really quick?
Well, let me see. Okay. Hi, Kumar, did I say your name right?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, correct.
Okay, are you waiting for anyone?
Yes, yeah, two others will be joining, I'll just text them, but we could go ahead and start the conversation. Let me text them that, you know, we are starting early.
Kumar, is John Bazin one of your attendees?
Yes, yeah, he's our real estate agent.
Yeah. All right, we'll move him up to a panelist.
Who is the second person, just so I can watch them?
Yes, yeah, so we have Gopal, he's actually the president of the Lhasa Foundation, he'll be joining as well. But I think in order to save time, probably if you are ready, I could go ahead and start with the introduction.
I think that's fine.
Okay, wonderful, so yeah, I can't thank you enough for taking time to meet with us today. I know it's not easy time that all of us are going through, so it's all the more reason why I'm grateful for your time. There you go, John has joined us. Hi, John.
He's on mute.
He's on mute, okay. So before I provide introduction, I just want to make sure if you have received the presentation slides on the Lhasa Foundation?
I don't think, through the chair, I don't think we've received the slides.
Okay, okay.
Margaret, I think it's the attachment I sent you by email, it was the Lhasa Foundation PowerPoint.
Okay.
There were, I don't know how many, eight, nine, 10, 11 slides.
Okay, let me see if I can pull that up.
This is pretty cool, you guys doing this all virtually, very exciting.
Yeah. Well, that's one way to put it, I guess.
I think our third attendee has arrived, too, Mary.
Yeah.
Okay, I have, I have the slides, and...
How much time we have, I can take you through the presentation slides in five, 10 minutes, and then I request for some specific dialogue to understand, you know, how we can partner, that's the goal of this meeting.
A prerogative of the chair, would you like to do it, would you like to go through the slides?
If you know how to share your screen, you could also bring it up on your screen, okay?
Yes, I can do that, too.
Oh, good.
Yeah, okay.
Well, Chris, would you like to go through the slides?
Okay, so should I spend about five minutes going quickly through the slides and then discussion?
Yeah, yeah, that would be fine.
Great.
Kumar Aiman.
Yeah.
This is Gopal.
So Gopal is the president of the Lhasa Foundation.
Hi, Gopal.
Hello, very, very nice that you gave us an opportunity to meet with you all and looking forward to this conversation. Thank you.
Can you all see?
Yes.
Yes. So quickly, the Lhasa, L S, stands for Lawball Servall Foundation. So this foundation has come about officially a couple of years back, but the underlying organization is Sri Thaksa International Organization that's based on, you know, members from all over the globe. There are about four major centers here in Boston area in four different corners. So what we are all trying to do is come together under one umbrella and find a home where we can contribute to the, to the community around us, because we have two major focus areas. One is the spiritual aspect, which is multi-faith spiritual aspect, and another one is the service. So we, the members provide service to the community. So what I'm going to quickly take you through is a bit more details in, under this umbrella. So yeah, so our basic philosophy is the best way to love God is to love all. So that's what brings us all together. We all come from different backgrounds, different religious faiths, with different parts of the world, but the philosophy that drives us is just this inspirational statement. So we have been undertaking in Boston area several service activities, just to mention a few, you can see there primarily serving food in Haley House, we provide Thanksgiving food baskets, we have been serving at Nashua Children's Home with Project Hope, we also serve in Perkins School for Blind, we do undertake Baker Human Service Project, we go to several old age homes, the one that you can see is more specifically Santa Maria, and so on. Our members are very well established in the community, just roughly to say, we have a number of doctors who provide service to the community, we have finance professionals, we have of course a number of technology professionals primarily in IT area, then we have teachers, and we have end gardens who are very enthusiastic in, you know, contributing to the community where we will be specifically located, but also in general in the greater Boston area. So these are the typical demographics of the members based on the zip codes. So we are trying to find a location that's convenient for majority of them, and we finally, after one and a half years of search, we are realizing that the Zero Central Berlin looks very promising in terms of the driving distance for most of the members, in terms of the potential land that's available, that meets our criteria for carrying out service activities as well as for, you know, our spiritual activities. So this is an artistic rendering of what we plan to build. It's not going to happen immediately, but over the course of time, this is what our aspiration is. So we will have eco-friendly buildings, we are going to have parking lot, we will have a congregation hall, we'll have industrial kitchen to serve as a soup kitchen for the community, and we will have, planning to have as much green and environmentally friendly surroundings as possible. We will have a community center, this is where we are looking for partnering with the community, maybe we could have elder care opportunity or, you know, bringing the elderly community to the center, help them out, and then maybe bring them back to their home. So we are pretty open in ensuring that, you know, there is a synergistic interactions with the community around us. So these are typically the three categories of activities. On one side, we have the devotional activity and the community service, and then you have the spiritual activity. So what we are looking for is basically a three to five acres of land on which we can build this facility. We are hoping that, you know, we can zero in on the Zero Berlin one, and then our value proposition is basically coexist, coexist, partner with the community, help the community, add value to the community, that's the value proposition that we want to bring. So that's the general overview, and I will request now Gopal to add any important pertinent points probably he may want to share.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Kumar, again, thank you all for giving us a little bit of opportunity to connect with you. Before, before I add anything else, I just want to introduce ourselves a little bit more. I live in the area, I live in Stowe, so this is, Berlin is probably 10 minutes from my house, and I have been in the community for about 25 years, working in the technology field, I'm a partner in a technology company that's based in Washington DC with offices in Boston. So we are pretty well established, my kids grew up in Acton schools, and, you know, one became a doctor, one became a school teacher. So we are very well integrated into the community. Our, our thought process is while we are integrated, we also want to give back to the community, we want to be integral part, and Kumar showcased some of the service projects that we have done and we continue to do, but the idea is that, you know, we can do a lot more, we can scale up what we do by a public-private partnership, you know, partnership of our organization with, with a town where there are needs, and also our community come together as a holistic community, not as, you know, we, we go to a center and do a little bit of service here and there, we, we feel that we can add a lot more, a lot more value, and we can scale up what we do to, to the next level. So those are the, those are the primary reasons, we have been in the Boston area, our community has been here for over 40 years, you know, we feel we have a critical mass, we have close to 600 people in our organization, and the idea is that we can come together, build something that benefits the community. Open to any questions, any, we went through that very, very quickly, so you probably are still trying to absorb, but very open to, you know, your, your questions, ideas, and hopefully this is the beginning of, you know, many conversations to come.
So maybe to make things easier, let me ask a question. So what are the ways that, you know, we can partner, how we can help you, you know, what are the needs of the Berlin city, right, and how we can fulfill those needs? Maybe we can start the conversation there.
Does Lisa or Peg, do you want to start, or have any questions, or, I mean, we're...
I think we have sort of bits and pieces of what you're offering that, that could maybe use assistance. We have a food pantry that's run out of the town offices, we have 19 Carter that sort of serves as a community center, but those are also things that could be potentially expanded with further help from the community.
And what are the, Lisa, what are the primary needs in the community? I'm, I live in Stowe, but I'm not as familiar with Berlin, I'm generally familiar with the towns nearby like Acton, Boxborough, Maynard, and so on and so forth, but what are the pressing needs in your community?
Well, we, I mean, we do have a pretty large proportion of an elderly community because we have a couple of developments that are specifically for that, and one more coming in. We are a community that has sort of grown and become popular with the addition of Highland Commons and the mall, and I think that there are families in town that do struggle because the property values have gone up, because we're now a very popular place to buy things, and there aren't that many places to buy, so I think that is a struggle in town.
Okay, got it, thank you.
To say the, one of the big ones for me definitely is something to do for the youth in town, Gopal, I mean, they, we have a recreation committee, but it's geared more towards organized sports, so it'd be nice if there was something that could be... So it'd be nice if there was something that could be brought to the town to give kids, you know, something to do or young adults, you know, to do and a place to go and a place for them to learn, to give back to the community. With that, you know, partner up younger kids, maybe with the seniors that are in town to help out. So it's really along all that service, you know, community service that you talk to and giving back and taking care of one another.
Yeah.
You're also woefully short on just basic meeting place for organizations. We don't really have a whole lot of places for organizations to just go that are not cost prohibitive. Whether it be Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts or, you know, any other type of organization. We're very limited in, in that type of space because our library is very small and doesn't really serve that purpose in our community.
Right. And actually, the, the location that we are looking at is very conveniently placed. It is right off of 495.
Which, which particular?
Good access point.
What, where exactly is it? I'm not really sure where Zero Central Street is.
Right to the left of the indulged spot.
Yeah.
So it's the big Victorian house? That.
As you, I, I don't know if you're familiar with the pet store and pet hospital? It's right there, behind that is the line.
It's the land.
Okay.
There's been a real estate sign up there for.
Forever.
Ever.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
It's essentially.
Know it by heart, 47 acres.
Of that, probably only nine acres is useful.
Yeah.
Margaret, is there anything you want to add?
Yes, I, I'm just looking at the, I'm looking at the slide. And the first thing I spotted, of course, was Easter eggs because I know that has been an initiative, one of Peg's initiatives to, to do the Easter egg hunt. So that's one thing. But I wanted to focus a little more on emergency preparedness. I see that you have 25 people who are CERT members. And we have, we don't have a functioning CERT Community Emergency Response Team program in Berlin at the moment. So that would be extremely helpful, I know, to our, to our Emergency Management Director and to the town. And also the state of the art building that you're planning to build. I don't know if that would have kitchen facilities, but we're always looking for emergency shelters or, or buildings that could be identified as emergency shelters for residents should the need arise. So I, I just wanted to call out the emergency preparedness piece of, of the town's needs.
Yeah, no, that is a, that is a great point. Our, our plan is, we, like Kumar presented, we, you know, kind of came together about year and a half, nearly two years back. You know, this is going to be a multi-year project, right? Because we need to also make sure that we have the funds available to build what we want to build. We also may want to make it both ecologically and also financially sustainable. We want to make sure that, you know, the future generations are not paying for what we are building, that we are able to build and self-sustain. And hopefully there is, you know, we can part, you know, through partnership to, through various things, we can actually also, you know, we are a nonprofit, so we don't want to generate profit. But we also want to make sure that the operating costs are taken care of. So we are working through various models to, you know, kind of figure out exactly how to do all these pieces. So ultimately, when, if our vision were to come together, it would have a nice community hall, it would have an industrial kitchen. And, and we will design and build such a way that we fit into the, the landscape and also with the community that we are building around this, if it makes sense.
What's nice too, Gopal, in a lot of the articles that you sent forward is that, you know, you talk about a mobile loaves and fish, which would definitely work well with the food pantry that we have. You know, you've been involved in park cleanup, which would tie in very nicely to our birthday activities. So it's, a lot of the things that you do are items that are already going on in Berlin. So it's, it's a very nice compliment to what we have.
Oh, that's great to know. Thank you. Yeah. And adding to that would be, you know, organic farming. You know, probably we could have a community vegetable garden, right? Apply vegetables to the community.
We've got a community garden that you should see. So again, complements the town's interests.
If you go down by the River Bridge Development at the end of town with the Rotary, there is a community garden down there. It was part of the agreement with them.
Okay, great, great. Is there a need for a soup kitchen? Do you have, you know, requirement for a soup kitchen?
We do Meals on Wheels in town and then anything else goes through wheat.
Okay.
And we have our, our own food pantry that does deliveries.
I don't know how long you've been considering Berlin. Whether you've had time to get to know or, you know, take a trip through, get to know the area and maybe talk to, well, probably not talk to many of the people right now, but. But I just didn't know whether you, you know, needed more background on Berlin or were pretty aware of the area.
Yeah, so in fact, we stumbled upon Berlin pretty recently. So we are learning as we go by. And we wanted to have this conversation before we finally make a decision to make an offer on the property. So that's where we are. Yeah. So maybe a more practical question for you would be, you know, what are the processes involved, you know, in terms of the zoning approvals? And, you know, any other unique approvals that we need to obtain that are relevant for Berlin compared to, you know, other towns? I live in Newton, so I am not familiar with Berlin at all.
I, I would say maybe a copy of the zoning bylaws. Margaret, would you agree?
Yes, I do. And through the chair, John, and, and I apologize, John, for missing that email from you that had the presentation attached. You have asked to meet with some town officials, the building commissioner, Concom. And I can try to get everyone together so you can better understand the requirements, the permitting requirements and any other requirements to locate or to construct the business in town here.
That, that would be great, Margaret. And of course, my battery is running low now. But the, the, so if I blip out, you know, that's, it's nothing personal. The, the, the whole concept, and Richard Hanks has been very responsive and there's a bunch of emails going back. So what Laza wants to do is to, first of all, it, this has been great. It sounds like there's great simpatico between who they are and what they are and what you guys are and what you have and where you, what your vision is. And so I, I think there's a lot of room for more discussion and getting to know one another. I think that would, that's a great start. As far as the building side, you know, there's a lot of rules. And these guys want to obviously obey the rules. They've got engineers looking at it. Probably the biggest issue from a, just a, from a physical perspective is getting a road up through the hilly part behind the pet store. There's 200 feet of road frontage there on Central. But it's a little bit of a challenge getting up there. There is an easement that was sold by the Wilsons when they sold off one of those lots to the right of the dog park or dog hospital or whatever it is, that may provide a little bit better. But they've got engineers beginning to explore that. And they'll go through the planning and zoning. We think they qualify for the Dover Amendment exemption in terms of, you know, this is a residential zoned area. But since this is a faith-based, religious, educational thing, we think they fit into that. And of course, they've got a land use lawyer that they're talking with to retain the services of. So it'll all be buttoned up and buttoned down in a procedurally correct way. And, and, you know, they want to, they, they really want to find a home where people understand who they are and what they are about. And it sounds like there's great possibilities for synergy here. So I was thinking Boy Scouts always need a place to, when I was growing up.
And there he goes.
We don't get to hear them. So through, through the chair, if I may, first of all, I want to note that Meals on Wheels has a soup kitchen set up at one of our local churches. And apparently they do need space. So that might be something else that, that could be a collaborative effort. With regard to the driveway, he was talking about a steep driveway. I do know that there are slope requirements and you'd have to go through the planning board for that. And I also understand that the Conservation Commission is going to require you to do the flagging of the wetlands on the property. But, but again, when we get together, we can talk about the various requirements.
If I can, if I can just add one more thing. As I mentioned earlier, we are also, you know, we want to make this sustainable. We want to be in the community for the next 100 years, right? So, so part of that is, you know, we want to do everything. We have great engineers, part of our team, already working to make sure that it's carbons, you know, carbon neutral and so on and so forth. We also want to make it financially, you know, sustainable. So, so we also want to explore any opportunities to, you know, partner so that, you know, part of the facility use and things like that, you know, could also generate some revenue stream. It goes to pay for the, the upkeep of the, you know, building and so on and so forth. So if there are, you know, exploring grants and funds and, you know, things of that nature would also be something that we would want to, you know, discuss with you. For example, I don't know if, if, you know, COVID related, I know federal government is spending a lot of money to address COVID. I don't know if there are any funds that you have access to or options that, you know, would, would be viable. We want to explore different options so that our operations are ongoing basis, they're sustainable.
Well, we can, we can certainly explore various options. With regard to COVID funding at the moment, to the, to the town, there is COVID funding available for businesses. So you'd want to, I don't know who it's available, what types of businesses is available to. I'm really only familiar with what the town can avail itself of as far as COVID funding. So for PPE and the things that we need as a town. But I would encourage you to look at the CARES Act and, and maybe other grant opportunities that are out there to help.
Yeah, I appreciate that. We'll do that. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
There are more, you know, questions about where can we get the, the maps and documents and surveys if they're already available on the property? But I think we will go through directly to the planning department. So I'm sure they will help us out.
They certainly can. And a lot of those materials are on our website. So if you go to the planning board's webpage, rightfromtowninberlin.com, you'd be able to find the zoning bylaws. So there, there should be several documents that are up on our website. But, but when we talk, we can start going through more details about things that you might need to reference.
And maybe Molly at the assessors too may have those maps.
Wonderful. Yeah, thank you so much. I mean, it's been amazing that we got to meet everyone. It doesn't happen if you try to come to the city hall to meet, right?
Right.
Take care and then be safe. Hopefully, I hope to meet you all soon.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kumar. Thank you, Gopal.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, let's see, where are we?
Town admin.
We're at the Town Administrator Report.
Okay. Here we go. All right, I'll start with Council on Aging Director. We have now, I think I mentioned at the last meeting that our Council on Aging Director is actually getting married and so has asked to move the start date. She initially said to July 8th, but we've, we've settled on Thursday, July 9th with a potential office, with potential office hours of Tuesday and Thursday, 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. And Friday, 1:00 PM to 3:30 PM. That would give her her 19 and a half hours a week. So Mary, I think Mary got the offer letter, we got it out today or, yep, it's.
I didn't send it to her.
Okay.
I will send it to her.
Yep, sounds good. Yes, thank you. So that's ready to go to her. And our 1870 Town Hall Manager, Lisa Betcher Smith, started today. Her office hours will be 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM Monday through Friday. Right now, she's just getting her feet wet. She's looking through the binder, she's looking through the files. She spent her morning at the 1870 Town Hall by herself this morning, just looking through things and figuring out where she's at. Tomorrow, we're going to do a little piece on our administrative processes for the town. So she'll know how to do payroll and submit bills and, and things like that. Um, the, okay, I wanted to know, I wanted to discuss something with the board tonight. Our personnel policies and procedures allow employees covered by the policies to accumulate not more than one and a half times the vacation leave accrual rate for each respective employee. And that the limit could be extended for up to 60 days if departmental scheduling or other extenuating circumstances related to the functioning of the department preclude the use of vacation leave at the time. And then it goes on to say approval and timing of vacation shall be determined by the department supervisor, appointing authority, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I kind of got this idea from looking at the forums, the statewide forums that have been going around regarding HR and the demands on employees and the fact that many employees have not had an opportunity to take the balance of their vacation leave this year because there have been more demands on employees, many of whom are required to report to work every single day. So what I would like to do is I would like to present to the board for your consideration some sort of mechanism that would allow employees to, to carry forward some of their accrued vacation time as the personnel policies allow. And to be able to use that vacation time within a, within a reasonable period of time. I could go on and on and on, but I'd like to at least present that for your, for your consideration. I think it's, most of our employees just have not been able to finish taking vacation, no surprise. So I'd like to be able to give that opportunity to them. And I'd like to know if you have any thoughts.
I, I would support whatever you put together, I would assume, Margaret. I just want to make sure Peg and Lisa, are you questions or comments?
No, absolutely. Nobody has been able to take vacation this year. And they're going to need it.
No place to go.
This, yeah.
Even if it's a staycation.
Everybody's going to need some time.
Yeah.
So Margaret, what are you thinking? Because what I don't want to run into is that, let's say, you know, you carry time forward now into July and beyond. So you, you know, take care of your three, four weeks. And now all of a sudden, you don't have a need to do three or four weeks next year because you've already used them up. I mean, are we going to say by the end of this time next year, whatever you've accrued or, you know, calculated to accrue that it's got to be done, that will carry over one, but we're not going to carry over two?
I'd like to look at it as if this year is kind of an exception or this year is seen as an unprecedented, you know, has unprecedented justification for doing this. By the end of next year, in other words, I'd like to be back to normal. You know, where, where, well, I'd like to be back to normal in many ways. But, you know, I'd like to not have to be looking at these, you know, these accommodations because of, because of COVID. So my thought was, and I'm going to talk to the Personnel Committee as well because I do know that the Personnel Committee, it does have some jurisdiction here. You know, where there is limited allowance to carry forward vacation, maybe allow an extension of that from 60 days to 120 days. Maybe allow the one and a half times applicable vacation leave accrual to be two times. And again, all. And again, all because this year is a major exception to what we would normally see. So that's, that's kind of my thought at the moment.
Yeah. And in general, I think we need to do a better job of encouraging people to schedule and take their vacation. I don't think we do a very good job of that.
Yeah.
Yeah. It is the healthy thing to do, isn't it? All right. All right. So I'll bring back more information. I'm going to be talking, if Personnel is going to continue to meet this week, I think they are. I will talk to Personnel on Wednesday night and then I'll come out to the board and talk to you more about it. Okay? All right. All right. My next thing is that the one-month expenditure plan that the board voted at your last meeting has been submitted to DLS for their review and approval. And the only reason this would be required is if we're unable to adopt our FY21 budget by June 30th. So we are, I think we're all hoping not to have to go there, but that is a just-in-case measure. Tonight, we've got another just-in-case measure where I'm going to be asking the board to authorize Chris to, or the chair, to sign a deficit spending request under Chapter 44, Section 31. That would allow for emergency expenditures over appropriation. And it does require a board approval. So that's coming up later. And finally, I also submitted the coronavirus relief funds application and certification last week. That was for $30,000 to cover qualified FY20 expenses. The coronavirus relief fund is separate, is separate from FEMA reimbursement where the coronavirus relief fund would cover 25% of a FEMA-eligible cost. FEMA, in that case, would cover the other 75%. So with some of our expenses, hopefully with all of our expenses, we would qualify for 100% reimbursement from both of those sources. But I think Mary's got a question. Mary's got a question.
Mary?
There's, there's an attendee labeled as Board of Health, but they're hand-raised. Would you like me to...
Oh, that's Sue. That's Sue.
Chris, bring them up.
Sure.
Do you want me to keep going or?
Hang on, let's see. Okay. Maybe it was a question on something previous. Do you have a question, Sue?
Unmute.
I'm asking her to unmute, but there you go.
There we go. My question was for Margaret, would you make sure that you include whatever proposal you make, that you would consider transferring backfill funds for anybody who's taking extended, you know, carryover vacation?
Good point. Because some departments, transfer station, police and fire would all require backfill funding. Yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
All right. Okay, I would encourage, I would encourage residents to watch the June 4th pre-Town Meeting and Budget Forum. If any residents have any questions still on annual Town Meeting or on our budget, that video would be helpful for them to understand what's being presented at Town Meeting. So that can be found right from the Town's homepage and under the News tab. Folks could click on Send In Your Questions Now Regarding the 2020 Annual Town Meeting and the link to the video is right there, as are links to the FINCOM's Recommended Revised Budget and the Town Meeting Warrant. The next thing I have is under Procurement, the Historical Commission met with the board last week and the board supported the idea of issuing a request for quotes for structural survey for the Bullard House. And that has been sent out. I have sent out a request and the deadline for submitting quotes is Wednesday, July 15th. Now, this is procured under Chapter 149, Construction, Construction bidding. And for quotes or for estimated, or for work that is estimated to come in at under $10,000, the, the requester, the Town, it has to follow best practices, which means we don't have to get three quotes, we don't have to do invitations for bids. If it's under $10,000, we follow best practices. So that has been issued in accordance with Chapter 149. The next one is the Community Garden and I want to thank Mary for her work on this. Carl Wickstrom emailed last week, he's the Chair of the Ad Commission, and he emailed us a request that we send DCR a request for the Ad Commission to use the remaining $4,822.41 balance in the Legislative funding the Town got in FY19 so that the Community Garden, so the Ad Commission, could upgrade its garden shed or perform some maintenance on the garden shed, purchase six additional raised beds and install a seasonal low-profile fence around the garden perimeter. So on behalf of the board, or Mary prepared this, and on behalf of the board, I have fixed my signature and I think a copy has been emailed to the board. And this is the request to the Department of Conservation and Recreation to allow the Town to continue to use these funds for those three purposes. The next item is Library Septet. The Board of Health is going to be holding a hearing tomorrow night at 7:00 p.m. It's a virtual hearing and the details on accessing the hearing can be found at My Town Government. Evan Carloni, our Volunteer Project Manager, will be attending on behalf of the Town as the applicant. And when this is done, I expect that we're going to be able to move into the procurement process with developing an invitation for bids for construction. The next item is Marijuana Virtual Community Outreach Meeting, also being held tomorrow night virtually at 6:30 p.m. To be clear, the Virtual Community Outreach Meeting, or any Community Outreach Meeting, is the responsibility of the proponent, not the Town. So the proponent, in this case, C3 Industries, is hosting the Community Outreach Meeting and the meeting information is posted on, the meeting notice is posted on the Town's website at townofberlin.com. Click on the News tab and then click on Virtual Community Outreach Meeting. And right now, I know I'm being long-winded tonight, I have a lot of start items. I want to just read aloud the toll-free number that people can call in from landlines if they do not have the technological capacity, if they don't have computer equipment or mobile phones to dial in. The toll-free number for tomorrow night's Community Outreach Meeting is 1-888-475-4499. And then callers will be prompted to enter a meeting ID, which is 507-043-953. For folks who do have a computer or mobile device, they can go to c3industries.com/community for the Zoom access information. Next is Town Meeting. Just a reminder, the Town Meeting is going to be held outside at 7:30 p.m. on Monday, June 22nd, next Monday, with a rain date of next Wednesday, June 24th at 7:00 p.m. Our annual Town Meeting Logistics Working Group is busy trying to plan and get things in place for that meeting. For the board, I've attached the task assignment list. So our working group has met once, we met last Wednesday, and we're going to meet again this Wednesday as a follow-up to make sure we're all on track. And for the board's information on the mosquito control, we are confirmed to have spraying done at the school after 8:00 p.m. on Friday, 9th, June 19th. But folks should bring their mosquito repellent anyway, just to, just to be safe. The ZB, okay, now, I was, I was contacted by ZBA Chair Lynn Ryan last week, who discussed with her, with the zoning Board of Appeals, the issue of two-year appointments. So the Town has historically, or at least for years, done two-year appointments for ZBA members. They should be five-year appointments in accordance with General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 12, and our local bylaw. So I expect that the ZBA Chair will want to come to a Board of Selectmen's meeting to discuss appointment terms with you at one of your upcoming meetings. The Town Election is on Monday, June 29th, from 12:00 noon to 4:00 p.m. Those are polling person, polling hours, in-person polling hours. Voters are encouraged to vote early or absentee by mail. And just with, as with the other things that are happening right now, go to townofberlin.com, click on News and then click on Please Vote Early 2020 Annual Town Election for information on voting in the Town Election this year. Only one last thing, and that's the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Plan. Our MVP Stakeholder Workshops, there'll be three of them, they'll begin this Thursday, the 18th, from 3:15 to 5:30 p.m. And then there'll be two more next week on the 24th and 25th, from 3:30 to 5:30 p.m. The stakeholders workshops are invite workshops. We've invited members of our business community, local officials, civic organizations, et cetera, to provide some initial input on the Town's Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Plan. And we have a meeting tomorrow, it's going to be our pre-meeting to make sure that the logistics are set. And that is it for tonight. I hope. So there's a lot...
Well, we're going to, we're going to ask you to keep going, Margaret. We, if we move on to old business, we're going to talk about an update about the Town Meeting motions.
Yes. So, the motions are still in progress. I have received the motions back in word from the moderator. So tomorrow, I'm going to be working on doing some final edits today. I'll send them back to the moderator, have him look at them. I have also sent them to Legal to, to comment on, on the motions as to legal form. So we're getting very, very close and these motion sheets will be put in the bags that will be distributed at Town Meeting to attendees. So they will be individually wrapped, so to speak, and people can take out their own motion sheets at Town Meeting and follow up. If the board has any questions about the motions themselves, feel free to ask, or do you want me to go through them or?
No, I don't think so. Okay. Legal, Legals looked at them.
Legals looked, yeah.
Barry's looked at them or will have looked at them.
And in the warrant, we actually included, even though the motions weren't in final form, in the warrant, the motions are at least shown on there in some sort of introductory form.
Okay.
I'm just wondering, normally, we distribute the motions between us. How is that going to work with you here and with the mic that's going to need to be swabbed off every time somebody different goes up to it? What's the plan for that?
So the moderator wants to have one mic up front. The moderator still wants to have the motions divvied up among the board members and FINCOM. I think he's planning on finalizing that and giving everybody their motion assignments, so to speak, or however that works before the meeting.
Okay.
And...
We would do that tonight.
Normally, we would have done that tonight, just only, just because then we know we're prepared to speak on it if we need to.
Okay.
I don't know that Barry has ever done that for us.
Okay. I, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure how that works. If you want to...
Mary usually... You're, you're meeting at 6:00 before Town Meeting by Zoom. So it could be dropped into your folders or you like to choose, right? Yes, you like to choose.
Well, normally, we've, we've all sort of worked on something or know more about something than, I mean, the warrant is pretty straightforward, so.
Yeah. Let me drop them in a Google Drive and you guys kind of, it does tend to follow logically who does what. Do I would just put them in a Google Drive and have people pick them?
Sure. They're in the Agenda folder tonight and in PDF form. If you'd like to, and I apologize, I wasn't sure, I wasn't aware that you had a pre, you went through these beforehand. So, yeah, they're in the, they're in your Agenda folder for tonight in PDF form. You'll see some strike-throughs, but the motions essentially are what you'll see.
Okay. Do we want to...
It's not always selectmen who introduce them, if they're being sponsored by somebody.
Right, right. Well, unless they're not resident of the Town, like Gabe Smith or the Fire Chief or the Police Chief. Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm going to need a little more information on this to understand how, how it works, but the motion sheets are in your Agenda folder if you'd like to...
If you want, I can set up a Google, just a quick spreadsheet and you all just kind of chime in next to who's who. I don't think that's really, and you could just confirm it on Monday. You also have raised hand in the audience, it's Barry.
Okay.
I'm going to bear you, co.
Here he comes.
I'm happy to have the board divide up the motions as is our norm. The, the, I would anticipate that the budget motions would be made by Finance Committee members.
Yeah.
They can distribute them among themselves. The, if there's, there's not much on the warrant that is from somewhere out there that, you know, somebody else would be doing. So you look at them and if there's something you think somebody else should do, go ahead and set that up. The one thing is, I'm hoping that that night, I'm actually going to have written right down in front of me, who's going to hold each motion. And the reason I want to do that is just to dispatch and making this meeting go as fast as we can. I, it, usually, I like a meeting that's not too scripted because it's more interesting and spontaneous and people feel like they've got a more stake in the whole thing. But this one, I'd sure like to have as scripted as possible just because it's outdoors, we're trying to keep it short, we're trying to keep people from being in a crowd for too long. So in this case...
They're going to meet on Monday at 6:00, Barry, and if, when they finally like nail it down, I can print it for you and Eloise in hard copy, you know?
That work? Okay, Peg, do you have a question?
Sue, where Lisa brought up the swabbing of the microphone, is the sewer gear still on? Yes, yes. Sue, is there any way that the Board of Health can find out from like the bigger Board of Health, probably in a showbook, the protocols around that and what needs to be done?
I kind of assumed that, that...
Margaret's probably already looked into it.
Sorry on it. I'm pretty sure they've got that under control.
Am I right, Margaret?
My plan was to have somebody detailed to actually wipe it over each time the speaker changes.
Okay. And then...
I offered, I offered to do it actually, but, but I, I might be, I might be needed.
You're always needed.
To speak to things.
You're always needed. And then this, okay. And then the second question that I had, where it is an outside meeting, is there like a specific quorum that we have to attain to make this a legal Town Meeting? Barry shaking his head, no.
No.
About three people is enough.
Seriously? Okay. All right.
Janet Lemmy has her hand in the air.
All right, Janet.
Okay, she's coming up.
There goes Bear.
So, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I was actually sitting in on a meeting about that needs to be attained to make this a legal meeting, at least that's what they said during this meeting I was in. And there is also certain protocols for the mic and the chemicals. And the last meeting I went to, I, don't quote me because I actually wasn't there listening for Town Meeting, I was there for something else and I was multitasking. I don't think they're even required to swab mics. So I do think it's something that needs to be asked of the, you know, the State Board of Health because there were very specific things about outdoor Town Meetings with quarums and all the stuff you people are talking about. And it was laid out in a document. Just, just so you know, I just don't want to have this happen and then find out after the fact that we... the fact that we.
We do have a couple of documents that.
Messed up and nothing's right.
But I don't, I don't recall what specifically was in them, but we will check up on it this week. We'll talk about it on Wednesday when we get together and, and see what we can do with it.
Thank you. Then through the chair, Sue, if someone from Board of Health could attend our logistics meeting this Wednesday, that would be really helpful, because your insight as far as swabbing the mic and things like that would be invaluable.
Yeah, we can try.
Well, it sounds like a plan, you're meeting Wednesday?
Yes.
All right, and you can let us know if you have any details that we need to know.
Okey dokey.
All right. Shall we move on to the next item on the agenda? Okay, I take that as a yes.
Looking.
All right. So the next thing on the agenda is, I, it took the three evaluations of our town administrator, Margaret, and wrote a narrative. If no one minds, I, I think I'd like to read it. So Margaret's first year as Berlin's very first town administrator has far exceeded the board's expectations overall, using the numerative criteria with a range of one through five averaged, with one being low and five being high, from members of the board, Margaret received planning and organizing a five, personnel supervision a five, decision making in 4.5, customer service, five, communication of information, 4.5, policies and procedures compliance, five, and financial management is a five, with an overall 4.85 average, which exceeds the expectation of the board. Margaret settled into her role quickly and easily, she assisted the board with hiring a fire chief, building inspector, treasurer collector, an 1870 town hall manager, and a council and aging director. In order to promote teamwork internally, she assembled an administrative finance team, or AFT, to assist the town's fiscal, with the town's fiscal practices and policies. She established close working relationships with the AFT and selectmen to assist the finance committee in establishing a budget for FY21. Due to COVID-19 virus, she worked tirelessly in March through May with all parties and recommended a readjusted budget to the board in May, which was approved unanimously. Knowing the financial uncertainty of FY21, several contracted, several contracted employees chose to follow Margaret's example and have asked for a wage freeze. Together, the board and Margaret put together a very comprehensive list of priorities and objectives for FY20 and 21. In addition to the requirements of the COVID-19 event, Margaret is working on or has accomplished most of the priorities and objectives, which is no small feat. Margaret has the ability to listen to all points of view before giving a recommendation. She has earned the trust of all with the ability to be fair but firm with all employees and personnel issues, the public, volunteers, and also in drafting policy. As the board moves towards more of a strategic planning strategy, the board members look forward to working with Margaret as our town administrator, hopefully for many more years to come. Thank you, Margaret. And I, and I do have just a little something that, I don't know if you can see that. This is the gold map when Berlin was with Bolton, apparently.
Thank you.
And then a little, little description of Berlin.
Fantastic.
So you can leave it at your Clinton home, or you can take it to your other home? Why in your office?
No, my just, I put my home away from home, my office, yes. It could be the first things I hang on my wall, other than the whiteboard and the bulletin boards.
Great.
Thank you.
I personally wanna thank you so much, you've worked so hard over this last year, and COVID-19 didn't make it any easier. And, and Peg and Lisa, if you have anything to add, please feel free. We're almost to that anniversary, July, was it 15?
July 15.
Yeah.
One month, yes, one month left. Wow, has time flown.
Yes, it sure has.
But thank you all, it's an honor, it's an honor serving the town of Berlin, it really is, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. And I guess we'll move on to regard to the town response to COVID-19.
Okay, back to COVID-19. Um, all right, so we are beginning, we are at the beginning stages, as you saw last week with the nine-page set of draft protocols, to trying to get back to some semblance of normal. It's going to happen very slowly, and, and, you know, on behalf of, of all of our departments, I appreciate the public's patience as we try to reopen our buildings eventually, and all in accordance with, with state orders and advisories. So I, I have sent this, I have sent an email to departments noting that I would be looking to recommend to the board tonight the following schedule for reopening, all in accordance with COVID-19 safety protocols being in place. That means equipment, cleaning and disinfecting, our employee training and education, making sure that hallways are marked, there is so much we need to do. But here is the rough, here is the rough schedule, again, subject to change depending on the COVID-19 protocols. So on Monday, June 29th, the highway department would return to its normal work schedule in accordance with all COVID-19 safety protocols. The public safety departments haven't been doing much very differently, because they have the ability to close off their lobby, so they'll continue to operate as they have been during COVID-19 via of, of the appointment process. The town office and library employees will return to work during their regularly scheduled shifts, Monday through Friday, current, subject to the current state requirement that the number of employees working in a single office space shall not exceed 25% of the office's occupancy limit. Now, the library is unique, the library is a very small space, so we have to be careful with the library, and there are, there are, there's one office in particular in the town offices that would either need to comply with the occupancy limit, or have a Plexi Shield and other protocols in place. During that week of June 29th, we'd be looking at doing safety training and the practicing of protocols, which will be ongoing. The buildings will remain closed to the public and no in-person transactions will occur, that's the same as, as what's happening now, and library curbside pickup might be implemented by appointment only that week. But that said, departments, if, if things go well, this is kind of like the, similar to the state's reopening process, if things go well, departments may start booking in-person appointments for the next reopening phase, which, as it stands right now, would be the week of July 6th. So that's the week the town offices would be, would reopen for in-person transactions by appointment only. We are going to have to have visitor logs, and we will be using visitor logs in all departments, we will be conducting alternate transactions using either door, the, the glass partitions that you saw in the doors, or the plexiglass partitions at counters. We will be practicing, we will still be practicing our own protocols, and we'll be sure, we'll be sure that cleaning and disinfecting is happening on an ongoing basis. We have had a little trouble securing some disinfecting equipment, because it's an extremely high demand. We are looking to order four handheld, I don't know what they're calling, I, disinfecting sprayers, that actually quickly disinfect virus and bacteria and things, but Dave is working on trying to get those quickly, so that we can be ready for, for our return to work. We have already, we have already gotten supplies of Clorox wipes, hand sanitizers, paper towels, spray disinfectant, masks, gloves, so we've gotten all the basic supplies, these big disinfecting sprayers are one of the things that we are waiting for. So that said, and we are, I'm, I'm still working on the protocols, I also included tonight in the board's agenda packet, kind of a concise checklist, it's the mass COVID-19 checklist. This, this two-page checklist essentially outlines everything that I've included in the draft protocols, with less detail, of course, but it's everything that we have to have in place. So this is what we're working on, and we are going to be going through this checklist to prepare. So with that said, what I would ask is that the temporary work from home policy that was established by the board on March 23rd be lifted, subject to having all state mandated COVID-19 protocols and measures to effectively and safely reopen in place, and I would ask that the date that that be lifted be Monday, June 29th, and again, it's subject to all of these other things, but because the board is having very few meetings from here, from now until July 6th, I thought I'd ask now, in hopes that we can get things in place.
Okay. You got a motion and a second?
Indeed.
Okay, we'll take a vote. I.
I, Saki, I.
Stone, I.
And that would make it unanimous.
I'll give the board another update next week at your, at your brief meeting before town meeting, just so you know where we stand.
Okay, great. Thank you for staying on this.
You're welcome.
If anybody says that there's nothing extra to do because of COVID-19, they're crazy.
They're crazy.
So I guess we're ready to move on to new business? This is in regards to the 110 grill application for the temporary expanded licensed premises. Would you like to go speak to?
I will start, and I'll ask Mary to weigh in, since this is another fast-moving, fast-moving thing with, with COVID-19, so I'll just introduce this by saying that the governor issued a recent order number 35 that allowed restaurants to expand their outdoor premises temporarily, to allow for, you know, to, to encourage business and to allow for outdoor, outdoor seating with social distancing accommodations. And with regard to the 110 grill application, Mary, would you be willing to speak to this, this piece of it? Thanks.
The department heads so far have been okay with it, the fire chief is going to just say conditionally, he approves until the fire marshal can come back and inspect the premises in person on June 22nd, but he didn't think that that should hold up the approval tonight. The building commissioner is okay with it, the police chief was also okay with it, and the board of health was okay with it. So the only condition would be fire marshal to follow up in person. It's the expansion of their, they already have patio service, so it's expansion beyond their present patio onto the sidewalk, and Benderson's approved that.
Okay, terrific.
Thanks, Mary. And again, this does not require ABCC approval, this only requires notice to ABCC that the local licensing authority has approved it.
Okay, so do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve pending the fire marshal's approval.
Seconded.
Okay.
Would it be effective immediately, though? Could it be released?
Um, if, I, I don't see why not, unless you suspect, or the fire chief suspects that the fire marshals can have an issue. No?
I didn't get that feeling, but I think he just wants to allow Dave to go back in and make sure, but I, I didn't think he wanted it to hold up the approval.
Okay, I, I, I really don't either.
He always has the, as the fire marshal, he always has the right to go back in and tweak stuff anyhow, if he thought that there was any way that people couldn't get away from like, the outdoor fire pit or something.
Okay, yeah, he might be conditioned on something he suspects needs to be done. Okay, so we will take a vote. Keith, I.
I, Saki, I.
Stone, I.
Okay, that would make it unanimous. Let's see, we're gonna vote to authorize the COVID-19 related deficit spending letter to DOR. Margaret?
I, I explained, I explained this previously, the director, the director of accounts at the Division of Local Services needs a request from the town to allow the town to overexpend its appropriation for the appropriations for the purpose of COVID-19 response. So I ask that the board authorize the chair to sign this letter, so we can get into, get it into the director of accounts at DLS.
Do I hear a motion?
Push to approve.
And seconded.
All right, then we will take a vote. Keith, I.
I, Saki, I.
Stone, I.
Hey, that's unanimous. The next thing on the agenda is the vote to approve the statement of the Berlin Board of Selectmen condemning racism. Lisa, did you wanna read the statement, or?
I can read the statement, I know that, was there anything else? I wanted to add the word citizenship. Margaret, was there anything else that you had gotten that needed to be added?
Nothing specific that needs to be added to what had already been prepared for the board's statement.
In the Google Drive, yeah.
Are you okay if I add the word citizenship in the last paragraph? As Tim brought it up, AT&amp;T and a lot of companies have started adding that particular.
Discriminate on the basis of.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's not a problem. Okay.
All right. Okay, um, let's see, right now, our country is struggling with two pandemics, one that can be solved by medical expertise and careful preventative measures, and another with heartfelt words and deliberate actions. One started mere months ago, although it feels far longer to, I don't think this is the right one, sorry, this is not the edited one.
Should take final.
Right now, our country is struggling with two pandemics, one that can be solved by medical expertise and careful preventative measures, and another with heartfelt words and deliberate actions. One started mere months ago, although it feels far longer to all of us, and the other has persisted many, many years. Racism has a very long history, we do not get to choose the moment where change can be made. While it may seem inconvenient or ill-timed, it is incumbent on us to recognize this opportunity and to take the actions we can to combat racism wherever it appears. The Berlin Select Board condemns racism in all its many forms. We recognize the majority of protests are peaceful and a very legitimate public outcry for justice long denied to people of color, and should not be overshadowed by the actions of a few promoting violence nor by COVID-19. Change starts at the local level. While this may sometimes seem like a hopelessly large and distant problem, we can all contribute to the solution. It is our responsibility as both individuals and a community to foster the values of diversity, equity, and inclusion. We believe that as a community, we can use this opportunity to have those difficult conversations that will lead to a better world, where all members of our society are treated equally no matter their skin color. The board hereby commits to establishing policies that respect all human beings and support racial equality, and to promoting moments of honest and empathetic discourse. The board further commits to supporting the human rights of all and condemning discrimination, and shall state in its meeting agendas, the town of Berlin does not discriminate on the basis of race, color, national origin, age, ancestry, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, religion, creed, disability. disability, veteran status, genetic information, homelessness, citizenship, or any other class protected by state or federal law. Sincerely, Christine Keith, Lisa Wysocki, and Margaret Stone."
And I, I would make a motion to approve that.
And I will second that.
And so let's take a vote. Keith, I.
Wysocki, I.
Stone I.
Thank you. Thank you. Good job. And we were asked to send this or forward this to, I believe, the superintendent of schools and.
Committee. And I know that Chief Galvin and others had asked to sign on.
Okay.
We'll distribute it to all.
All right, thanks, Margaret. Let's see, what do we have here? We have line item transfers.
There are two. Dave is here somewhere. The first is, I'll start introducing. I'll start introducing them. Was, is Dave, yep, there he is, okay. All right, Dave's here.
You make him, you're gonna make him do it, huh?
Margaret's running out of steam.
I am running.
Hi, Dave.
Good evening. How are you?
We're good.
So I'm looking to transfer money to cover the salt expense that we purchased to fill the salt shed. We're taking our out-of-wages, just transferring that to cover the expense for salt.
All right. And that was both of the?
That is one.
Oh, that's.
Second, the second request is, I'm running short on my full-time payroll, two reasons. One is overtime on trees. Over the last years, I think I spent $500 more in overtime than we had budgeted. And when I did the budget last year, I neglected to take into account that there are two 10-hour days at the end of the year instead of an eight-hour day. So I'm gonna be over on my budget roughly $1,000. So I'm looking to transfer money out of my highway expense account into the highway wages full-time, $1,000.
All right, is there any questions?
Both transfers.
Do I hear a second?
A second with a question.
Okay.
So Dave, you said that you're moving money out of highway full-time wages, but then you said on your second one that you need, that there's two 10-hour days, so I guess I'm kind of confused as to how you can move money out, but you're saying that you need more.
And confused for what reason?
Well, you see, you had balanced an account of, of, was that $14,000, and that you need another thousand. And it said that you're gonna take it from the highway wages full-time.
We'll take it from highway expense.
Okay, all right, never mind. We're good. Okay. Mary's gonna hand.
June has her hand up.
Okay.
Here she comes.
So, how we doing? Can you hear me now? Okay, I just wanted to clarify, Dave, that the first one peg, I don't know if this is what's bringing the confusion, is that the first one that he's asking for is actually coming out of the snow and salt wages. So that's where that's coming from, to offset his snow and salt expense line item. Second one is just a transfer into his regular highway wages.
Yeah, because the first one, June said account name, highway wages full-time, so it didn't make sense to take it out of full-time if at the end of the year you were asking to put it back. But as long as this one is the snow, which thank God we didn't need, then I'm, I'm good. Thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
Thanks, June.
Welcome.
Hi, June.
Thank you.
Got a motion and a second on the table. Let's vote. Keith, I.
I saki, I.
Stone I.
All right, that's.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Bye, Dave.
All right. Moving on to the Mabel Felton Marble Memorial Scholarships for this year. We have two applicants, Abby Hyatt at the, at Toronto Class of 2020. She's gonna do nursing studies at Salve Regina Newport, Rhode Island. And Natasha William Francisco, Class of 2020 at Toronto. She wants to study sociology at University of Massachusetts at Lowell. Was there anything else, Mary, that we need to know about this? We're, we're all set? Everybody's.
Those are the two timely applicants, yes.
And then, and they've given all of their, the information that they needed to share?
Yes, recommendations and everything, yes.
All right. Okay. Questions, comments?
Motion to approve.
And seconded.
Okay, let's take a vote. Keith, I.
I saki, I.
Stone I.
All right, congratulations to those two classmates at Toronto for this year.
Hey, does anyone know if Natasha Francisco is Aaron Francisco's daughter? Just because Aaron, Aaron and I went to high school together. He was a year older. So it's kind of cool how, if it is true, you know, the Berlin, the Berlin town folk keep repeating.
I suspect so.
Yeah.
Could be.
Very cool.
All right.
Janet has a hand.
We're down. Oh. Okay.
Janet knows.
Yep, Janet knows.
Go ahead, Janet.
I just wanted to say, yes, that is Aaron's daughter.
Wow. Janet, are you conserving electricity on Derby?
I don't know why. I don't know why. There's something wrong with my laptop.
I think you need to run down to Lisa's house because it looks like she has full power.
All right, bye.
A little dark at Mary's house, too.
Yeah, but Mary's outside. She has an excuse. Janet's inside, just saying.
I think she's in a bunker.
All right, we're, we're down to board questions and comments. Nothing?
I got nothing.
I got nothing, too.
I got nothing.
I guess I'm just gonna use this opportunity to say thank you again to all those who came out on Saturday. It was fabulous seeing everybody out by the church. And thank you for, to everybody who helped to make it happen.
Absolutely. Yep. And so with that, and is this your, this will be your last meeting, correct?
Other than the one before town meeting, yep.
Which is an official meeting, so it's your second to last.
That's right, that's right. And actually, there'll be a Zoom meeting at six o'clock on, on Monday, too.
This is your last unmasked, oh no, I guess the, the six o'clock, too, yep.
Yep. Yeah. But so I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded, boom.
All right.
Good night, everyone.